New words. Okay, we will open up the public hearing scheduled for 5:45. For the purpose of receiving public input regarding a resolution regarding joining the Connecticut Municipal Redevelopment Authority as a member municipality, as submitted by Paul K. Perneruski Jr., Mayor of the City of Waterbury. If you wish to address this board on this topic only, I ask that you sign up with our City Sheriff, Steve Conway. You'll have five minutes to speak on this issue. I will give you a one-minute warning. Please state your name and address for the record, Mr. Conway.
First speaker tonight from 1400 Mariner Road, Martin Spring.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I got here just in time. Not a lot of red lights today. The Connecticut Municipality Redevelopment Authority, the state agency established to assist municipalities in promoting transit-oriented development pertaining to focusing on increasing housing options and help stimulate economic growth, a quasi-public state agency, if you will, created in 2024 by state law. I know Nogatuck has already joined, and, you know, I really don't have too much to say on this, but I think it's a good idea, and I think the members of the Board of Aldermen should really consider very strongly to support this, especially my Republican colleagues, because we're always looking for good things to happen in the City of Waterbury. And if nothing, not for nothing, if it's not going to cost us anything, there's no really money involved in this, and it's going to be, you know, something very positive for the City of Waterbury, then I would ask all the members, every member of the Board of Aldermen, to support this. All right, thank you.
Next speaker from 413 Harpers Ferry Road, Paul Condes.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Mr. President, members of the board. My name is Paul Condes. I reside at 413 Harpers Ferry Road. I'll make this brief. We need to join this redevelopment authority, and I ask for your support. Thank you.
Mr. President, that's the last speaker tonight for the public hearing.
Okay, with that, we will close the public hearing, and we will start our scheduled meeting at 6:00 PM. Okay, we will call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen for Monday, March 10, 2025. If everyone will please stand for the pledge allegiance in a silent prayer.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Alderman Alsop. Alderwoman Cavallo.
Present.
Alderman Dorso.
Alderman Hunter.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Mosley.
Here.
Alderwoman Martinez McCarthy.
Present.
Alderman Newjane.
Alderman Rinaldi.
Here.
Alderman Rodriguez.
Present.
Alderman Salvio.
Present.
Alderman Taldean.
Present.
Alderwoman Weaver.
Here.
Alderwoman Zimmerman.
Present.
Alderman Dijo Vincarlo.
Here.
Fourteen present, one absent.
Okay, and Alderman Dorso is out of state and could not make the meeting. With that, the next item of business is public speaking. If you wish to address this board, I ask that you sign up with our City Sheriff, Steve Conway. Please state your name and address for the record. You'll have a five-minute time limit, and I will give you a one-minute warning. Mr. Conway.
First speaker tonight from 15 Boydine Street, Deborah Kelleher.
Good evening. My name is Deb Kelleher. I am the executive director of the Annie C. Courtney Foundation. I know some of you up here. So the reason I'm here tonight is because my agency just purchased three single-bedroom condominiums here in Waterbury so that we can start housing kids who've aged out of foster care. And after the sale was completed, which was a lot of drama in and of itself, I got a call within a week stating that we were not going to clear title because, in addition to what you're seeing on the documents that I just sent around, and I apologize because I didn't know how many people there'd be, so I only made seven copies, we owed an additional $7,000 for fees because all of the condos had been on the auction block through the previous owner. And we didn't know that. As you can see in that document, nowhere does it state that each of those condos also owed an additional around $2,500 each for us to clear title. And so we ended up having to use our title insurance company to negotiate with the seller, who apparently, by the way, knew that he owed this money, but he didn't disclose it at closing. But when the title insurance did their title search, it didn't come up. And so I am asking you that for these letters that are provided for folks like me who are purchasing properties where the owner owes a substantial amount of money and they've been put on the auction block, that you have the marshal's office add a single sentence that says there may be auction fees due in addition to these monies. Please check with the auctioneer so that you can clear title. Because had that happened, we would have, we would have known that prior to closing, and I would not have had the kind of drama I had in my life for three weeks. The payments were not made until two days before the units were scheduled to be auctioned. Thank you.
Next speaker from 1400 Mariner Road, Martin Spring.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the Board of Aldermen. I just want to say before I talk about this so-called new car tax, which I, we're not too happy about it, to be honest with you. I'm happy everybody's here today, too. So this, this is rewarding for me because I've been coming to these meetings for a long time for the budget and everything, and I hardly see anybody. So I'm glad to see that the citizens are participating in our government because this is what, what Waterbury is all about, and this is what our democratic republic is all about, the people participate in the new government, they're talking to all the members of the Board of Aldermen, every district. Another thing I want to say is there was no agenda on the city's website for at least three or four days, and it was on today. But I didn't have time to print it out, so I don't have an agenda, so I apologize for that. Now, the new car tax for all Waterbury residents, why not cut spending? Itemize your priorities in outdated programs. You know, President Trump is doing it, and they're, I know people don't want to hear about Musk, Elon Musk, but they're doing outdated programs, and they're making a lot of cuts. And I understand a lot of people are upset about it, maybe a lot of mayors and municipalities, and governors are going to be upset. But you should only spend what you have in your pocket. We do at home. We do not go out and spend extra money when we don't have it. We just can't afford it. So I think that's something you guys should consider. I'm told that renters have virtually no skin in the game, even though we make up at least 60% of the population. Well, I want to let you guys know, we sold a house because we couldn't afford it. And I'm a Waterbury resident. I was born here, and I'm an American citizen, okay? And I just don't understand, and a lot of my friends are veterans, too, and I don't understand why anybody would make an outrageous statement like that. I don't know who made it, but it's not right because, you know, we are good people, we work hard, we pay our bills, and our rent is going up again, probably because new taxes are going to be on the horizon. So that's something you should consider. You know, if you have a family like us making $35,000, $40,000, I know there's a lot of people out there making probably a lot more, maybe a lot of you guys, but it is what it is. You know, we're trying to survive and do what we can. And like I said, this is the best thing that we can do is get up here and talk to you people, okay? I mentioned this before, before this body of Aldermen, government has grown by leaps and bounds, buying everything in sight from A to Z. Drastic measures need to be implemented within the new budget. The mayor says we need to have the special car tax, or the alternative will result in taxing the homeowners and local businesses. That is not good. I have friends of mine right over here, he's a businessman, I know a lot of you guys are and ladies, you're business people, and this is no good to go ahead and implement some new taxes in the City of Waterbury. You're not going to get people to come to the City of Waterbury and move here and want to prosper here if you're going to keep taxing people. I always said this, and I'm sorry to be disrespectful, but my friend always said a Democrat never met a, met a tax they didn't like, okay? And I don't, I don't agree with that because I know a lot of Democrats are good people, all right? So I also have to say this, I have a better solution. Why not have a commuter tax for the folks who work here but don't live here? In other words, people who work for the City of Waterbury or whatever job they have, tax them. They're making enough money. Some got double jobs, triple jobs, making an awful lot of money. I know some are making up to $200,000 a year. You got to be kidding me. It's like winning a damn lottery, you know? Come on, help us out, do something, you know? But again, doing this would certainly raise some eyebrows. Like I said, probably a lot of eyebrows being raised right now about me. That's right. Oh, well, such is life. So to make it fair and equal, have the tax base on your pay and a percentage of your salary. We can also.
One minute.
Thank you, Mr. President. We can also look at an exit tax. Let's all work together and find a solution, okay? I know I got one minute, but the bottom line is, we got to work together as Waterburians, as citizens, and we got to do what we can, members of the Board of Aldermen and all the districts you're in, 71st, 72nd, 73rd, 74th, 75th, the legislature up in Hartford, the State Senate up in Hartford, even the federal government, do what we can because, you know, I'm so happy to see so many people here because I was getting pretty lonely coming down here, to be honest with you. And, you know, I mean, I, I got, I'm not saying I got better things to do in my life, but I have a real good lady at home because, I'm telling you, man, anybody else would have been divorced by now, thank you.
Next speaker from 178 Cook Street, Emma Taylor.
Emma Taylor, 178 Cook Street. Good afternoon, good evening, happy spring ahead. I am, I don't have a lot today, just two things. Fulton Park. I walk there every day, and we have a house that's there that has a whole bunch of moss on the top of the roof. And I was just thinking, it's like, is there any idea or, you know, is there a way that we could probably put a police substation in that house? It's a nice brick house, it's really nice, and they could kind of like look down and around the park and see what's going on in there because the, the kids just wreak havoc at times, they do crazy things. But it's just an idea. I just figured I'd put it out there so you could put it in your record. And I have a question, and I know you can't answer it right now, but I was just wondering how the garbage bill, garbage cans being on the sidewalk is working out because I walk every morning, and those garbage cans are out there on the street way after pickup day. Cook Street pickup day where I live is put them out Wednesday, pick up Thursday, and they are still out there on the sidewalk. That's all I have. Thank you.
Next speaker from 45 Pierce Street, Sharon Samaska.
Good evening, Sharon Samaska, 45 Pierce Street in this city. Before you start the clock, I just want to give a special thanks to our street department, especially for Nicole. She is a smiling ambassador, if anyone is, and I just thank you for that. Now for my usual conversations. I want to call your attention to a document called W A T E R. That document came out in about 2014 exploring the potential Greenway project, revealing a lot of issues in the city, especially in the South End. Pollution, toxicity, all were documented. It was written to enhance the reason to create the Greenway. The data was known then, yet I very rarely heard this data mentioned, and I'm sorry for that. I think it should be mentioned with all of our work on our brownfields and in that area of town. With changes in our EPA laws and funding or even existence, will health and safety of residents be further harmed? Over the years, some improvements have been made to rehab the South End, but much, much more needs to be done. Isn't more environmental respect needed? Isn't it beyond need? It's essential. Trees mowed down that protect us from pollution and weather don't grow overnight, it can take up to 30 years. Plans should be made for potential disasters, but in our town, we find so little of what is the plan for a potential disaster. We wait until it happens to do something. And now, with cuts in the EPA, with cuts in funding, what help will we get? Number two, Waterbury Hospital. There are those of us who have talked together, and we wonder why Connecticut does not have a community hospital program. We have spent dollars and dollars to keep track of what Prospect Medical is doing to try to. Prospect Medical is doing, to try to protect patient care, to keep them in line with what their contract was made to be. Wouldn't it make more sense if we had community hospitals where our state took care of them, and the monitoring was done all the time, employment conditions were better, and a patient wouldn't die for lack of care? Or sitting in an emergency room who has cancer and is on chemotherapy and somehow ended up in a room with two highly contagious patients? That's not acceptable. We can do better. You know more stories, but what is the potential for looking into that community hospital situation? Bristol Babcock, I thank Ron Casella from WDC. He has reported to me that the signs that were torn down are going to be replaced. Currently, work is ongoing with the evaluation of the site and its toxicity and, excuse me, composition, I'll get it right. Looking forward, I advocate for development based upon changes in funding and laws, to seriously consider making it an extension of the Greenway as a nature preserve, with a museum that will honor gifted inventors at Bristol Babcock and other facilities in our town in the history. Boards for positive graffiti, which our students and our youth are so gifted at doing, let's show it. Let's give them a reason to do it right. And a community garden. We also have noted, and I am online with groups throughout the country, that cities are now being put in positions of needing community gardens. We have one, we have a budding number two, we need far more. That site would be excellent for this. We also could use it as a tribute to the Nogatuck River. We've made it a clean place from the pictures that I can imagine in past times. Let's think about it. Youth programs. What programs are available for youth? Is there a listing? I was told Representative Hayes had made notice of scholarships that were available for youth, but apparently this response was nowhere near what they expected, if it was a response at all. How do we get information out there? Last month, I spoke about college students and their families. They are so anxious that education opportunities are slipping through their fingers. This is not wise for a world where we depend upon our college students today to be our leaders tomorrow. Let's figure out a better way. ICE.
One minute.
Does our city have a task force to deal with this? And if so, how are they doing it? There is a lot of concern for minor aged youth who need to be here, but if their parents are taken away, what happens to them? Tariffs do nothing but escalate our prices. What is the real intent? Do we have resources to find alternate sources of electricity? Tariffs won't make us rich. They're negative. Foreign countries don't pay for the tariffs, people. Ultimately, it is you, and it is I, and it is our city, our people, not the foreign countries. We're the ones that are going to be hurt, and we already are. Senior citizens are facing what happens to Social Security. Our family's one of them. What happens to medical insurance if it's cut? My husband's a veteran, he has treatments or visits two to three times a week or more. What's going to happen to him? What's going to happen to the people who can't pay for their groceries now? Can we do something? I am suggesting, if we don't
That's time, if you can wrap it up, okay?
I will. I'm suggesting that a committee be created, if there isn't one, to study hardships for people in our cities. I'd love to be on it. We need to figure out how we're going to help people. Higher taxes, they're just going to fall apart. They're not going to survive. And we can do something. So let's get on board and do it. Our nation has made strides for all of us. We shouldn't forget that. We need to come together to make decisions, not make decisions apart that separate us. Thank you.
Next speaker from 413 Harpers Ferry Road, Paul Kandash.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the Board. My name is Paul Kandash. I reside at 413 Harpers Ferry Road. As you are well aware, I always fact check myself before I deliver my remarks, to make sure I give you the most accurate information. Several months ago, I stated that the Ford F-150 has been the number one selling automobile in the country for the last 52 years, and that was a true statement. Unfortunately, I must have jinxed them, because last year it was replaced by the Toyota RAV4. So they are no longer, after 52 years, number one. Number two, the last time I addressed this board, I spoke about the inordinate amount of tax warrants that are coming through in Waterbury, and checking out other cities, I don't know if you read last week's paper, torn yet at 55. Thank you.
Next speaker from 3221 East Main Street, Unit 11, Alan Leon.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Alan Leon. I'm from 3221 East Main Street, Unit H. Let me tell you, the last time I spoke in front of a group of people, to Mr. President and the Board, it was 1990, and it was for saving UConn up in the Hillside campus of Waterbury. And if you go back to the newspapers, you look at the microfiche, probably not used any longer, you'll see my picture on it. I acquired 10,000 signatures in Waterbury, myself, to get approval and to remain UConn up at the main campus, because the professors, the administration, they wanted to stay there. And this was long before downtown was even thought of, but it was in the works. Why I'm here tonight, I spoke before the legislation committee up in Hartford, and that was maybe 1991. And here I am today, 2025. Did I ever think I'd be doing this again, two times in my lifetime? It's way too many times, let me tell you. I'm not going to take the full five minutes, because I don't think I could stand here before the pain gets too bad that I deal with. But what I want to say is, there's probably options that can be looked at before approving this 7067 bill. Whether it's tabling it for now until the budget is looked at, it's leaned out, it's made more efficient, maybe you can come up with that gap that you're so fearful of having, before you start taxing the citizens of Waterbury. There's only a certain percentage in Waterbury that pay taxes. How much can you continue to drain the pocketbooks of the people of Waterbury? So what I'm saying is, it's just a message to everybody and to the people watching live tonight, and maybe will watch it in the future. It's time to vote with common sense. There are a lot of vehicles in town that are unregistered, uninsured, they're not going to be paying taxes. There's so many New York license plates in town that you look around, it looks like you're driving around the Bronx of New York. These people, whether they're renters or not, they won't be paying taxes. So the burden falls on all of us who have been paying, I've been here 66 years in my life, I've been paying taxes since I can remember. But the burden falls on them. We already have increases coming in the fourth step program for our property taxes. I want everyone to realize, this is not common sense. This is an easy way, maybe, of acquiring that gap money. And so I'm going to ask everybody that's watching and listening, and if they're going to vote this fall, to look at their representatives of their district and say, did they vote in our best interest? If they didn't, then you have to almost roar and roar loudly by your actions when it comes to voting. Send them a message that, you know what, it's time to vacate your seat and allow someone to come in who will represent your interests. Waterbury, at one point, I remember it being here, wherever here is on a scale. But it seems like now, for me, Waterbury is down here. There's so many people that don't want to drive in the city, it's too dangerous, driving through red lights at high speeds, more deaths by bystanders crossing the roads. I don't see Waterbury improving. How many times can you put lipstick on a pig when you think it's going to look pretty good? It doesn't. It just adds more lipstick to it. So I hope you really think about alternatives to voting in favor of this bill.
One minute.
And I recognize so many people, and I enjoy everybody here, and I hope you don't have to see me again. I came in the John Fetterman attire today, only because I was out all day and I could not get home in time to be here. But I am embarrassed by that. But let that not bother you. Thank you very much, everyone.
Next speaker from 288 Fieldwood Road, Michael Servalino.
Michael Servalino, 286 Fieldwood Road, Waterbury, Connecticut. Mr. President, Board of Aldermen, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. I haven't been here in a long time. I'm coming back. I just want to talk to you about the bill before you. You know, two years ago, we were promised a little bit lower taxes, a step increase going down, it's not going to be as painful. Well, it's painful, because mine went up. Now we got car taxes coming, it's painful, it's going to go up again. There's a reason why I have a 2000 and a 2005 car, a 2001 car, because they're considered antiques, okay? I don't want to go buy another car and pay the taxes. I don't want to get all of this stuff here. There's a lot of other people out here that don't pay taxes. If we could just focus on that, that would help that deficit. I think we got to be the new Elon Musk here, and maybe do a little forensics in this city, and look at the new budget, and look at some of the wasteful spending. Man, there are some stuff out there that they pay upstairs, like condoms and all kinds of rings, you know, and Planned Parenthood and stuff that we're paying for. Come on, guys, let's look at that budget, and let's make some cuts where we really can, okay? Because there are a lot of people that don't pay taxes. I own a house, I own a lot of cars, and I got a business, and I got a lot of employees that I'm responsible for in this city, and their families, and I pay a lot of payroll. And at some point, you're going to drive me out of here with more and more taxes. I look at my personal property tax, on my chairs and on my mirrors, that have been there 18 years, and I'm still paying $18,000 to $20,000 a year, on some chairs that we cut in. Why am I paying $18,000 on some chairs that are 18 years old? I don't understand this. At what point does that go away, okay? Why do I got to keep paying and paying and paying more and more as my stuff depreciates? It depreciates. At what point does it get to zero? And here, it doesn't. It doesn't go to zero. And I go downstairs in that tax office, with my special sheet in October, I can't get any help. I'm not an accountant. No, see, you're a accountant. I am the accountant. I got quick books. I am the accountant. I don't understand how you guys do it, but all I know is it's not in favor of the taxpayer. 17 years at Bell Academy, and I'm paying more taxes on that building, not on the building, but on the stuff, because I read, on the stuff that's in there than I started 18 years ago. Where is the common sense here? Where is it? My vehicles, over 20 years old, I'm still paying. Why? At some point, we got to say, there's got to be a limit here, okay? I'll help, I'll pay my fair share. But I just left my accountant, and he said, Mike, you're up to over 350,000 this year. I said, oh my God. I said, you better work some magic on that thing, okay? That's just federal. Wait till I get state and I get local, you guys. Come on. Let's cut. Let's start cutting, and let's stop, okay? Because I'm tired of being overtaxed. Because you're, at some point, I'm going to reach a breaking point, and you're going to have a lot of people on the unlimited lines. Thank you, guys.
Mr. President, I believe that's the last person that signed up tonight.
Okay. With that, next item on the agenda would be the approval of the minutes from the Monday, February 10, 2025, regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen. Alderman Martinez-McCarthy, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Weaver.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Here are none. All those in favor approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, the minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda, Mayor.
Good evening, thank you. It's nice to see you all. It's nice to see so many people here this evening. And I want to address you a little bit on this tax change, and where we are with it, and what the ultimate decision that we've made. But there's some history as well to get to. So as you all know, the only way cities can raise revenue to pay for the services they provide is through property tax, real property tax, personal property tax, and auto taxes. While, Martin, you have some great ideas and other revenue sources, they're not available to municipalities pursuant to state law right now. So those are the ways we can come up with raising funds. And we have to provide services. There's no question that at the end of the day, we have to have police departments, and we have to plow roads, and pick up trash, and do all of those things. And we'll be presenting a budget in the next couple of weeks that's going to cover all of those things. This is one particular item. So, you know, one of the elements in getting revenue for cities is through automobile taxes. And historically, automobile taxes have been set on an assessment of the automobile based on what that year's blue book value was, depending on the kind of car that you had. And during COVID, blue book values went up, because you couldn't get cars, so used car values went up. And the legislature decided that they were going to fix that problem, which, by the way, is currently fixing itself as used car prices come down. But the way they did it was to change the way you value cars for tax purposes. It was to go from the blue book value to the manufacturer's suggested retail price, and then you depreciate from there. And so the original version that was passed, the one that's still on the books, the one that is currently applicable to the city of Waterbury and all other 169 towns, would have set the MSRP for each car, and starting in the first year, you would, the assessed value would be 85% of the value of the car. The next year, it would be 80, 75, all the way down to 20. And when they did that, it changes the dynamics of the values of the cars. And so when we looked at it, the grand list for automobiles dropped down by 11%. And that translates into approximately, and all of this adjusts as the tax year goes on, but based on last year, adjust to approximately $2.5 million less in revenue, just everything else being equal. And it affects every town in Connecticut the same way. And so there was a lot of concern from mayors, for selectmen, from assessors and others. And the legislature went back and said, all right, we get it, we're going to fix it. And so they came back with the fix that said, instead of starting at 85%, you start at 90%. You go down to 95, 90, or 80, and all the way down until you get to the year 20. We thought that that approach initially would get us back to where we started, and we would be on the same playing field we would have been if we hadn't gone from the blue book values. But we wanted to take a look at it. As you know, the legislature passed this just last Monday or the Monday before that. If you're going to make an adjustment to your grand list for automobiles, you have to get that done by April 15. So there's a window in which you have to accomplish this. This meeting really becomes the last meeting at which we can consider doing that, if we were going to do it. Because to do it tonight would have given us a chance to go back and revalue the grand list and get it done in time for the April 15 deadline. So we put a placeholder on. And you'll notice there's no resolution in your packet. It was just a placeholder so that we could take it up tonight if we wanted to. And so we went through, and we analyzed it, and we continued to analyze it to see how this was going to play out under each option. Keep in mind that right now, we are under option A. We have no choice about that. We can make a choice to go to option B, we're currently under option A. And in fact, we had this conversation last week. Alderman Rodriguez came in to see me with some questions, and I laid out to him what I'm about to lay out to you as far as the findings go. So under the plan, under the proposal, what we thought initially as well was under either the A, which is the existing plan, or B, which is what we could opt into, that all car taxes were going to come down. They would come down a little bit more under the A plan, a little bit less under the B plan, but everybody's car taxes would come down. That's where we started. But as we looked at it, we found some interesting things happen when you play with the numbers under these circumstances. So for most cars, a lot of cars that are under 20 years old, in fact, the taxes under both scenarios do come down. So if you look at a 2018 Honda Accord, last year, the taxes on that car were $456 and change. Under the existing plan that's in place right now, those taxes would go down to 322, or drop by $134. And under alternative B, they would be 351, or drop by $105. 2020 Chevy Equinox was $500 last year. This year, under A, would be 429, a drop of $70, or under B, 462, a drop of $37. And a 2021 Chevy Silverado, which is currently, was taxed last year at $1,195 And a 2021 Chevy Silverado, which was taxed last year at $1,195, would go down to 701 or drop $418, or under B, would be 751, dropping $368. That's what we thought was going to happen everywhere. However, as we ran more numbers and did more sampling, we found that some cars under 20 years old are actually going to go up under either plan. So a 2018 Cadillac XTX Luxury Edition, which last year would have paid taxes of $442, will this year, under A, the scheme that we're under, is going to pay taxes of $644, an increase of $202.55. Under B, the taxes would go up to $703, an increase of $261. Same is true of a 2016 Cadillac Escalade, which last year paid taxes of 724. This year, under A, if we do nothing, will pay $814 in taxes, an increase of $90. Under scheme B, it would be $904, which would be an increase of $180. And a 2017 Cadillac CTX, which last year paid $643, will this year pay $768 under scheme A or $844 under scheme B, which is an increase of $125 or $201. So those are going up no matter what we do, just depends on how much. Some cars under 20 years go down under A and up under B. So an Audi 2017 Q3 Premium, which was 428 last year, under A, would go down by $12 to 415. Under B, would go up $29 to 457. And a 2021 Infiniti Q50, which last year was $706, would, under A, go down $11 to 694 and, under B, would go up to 744, an increase of $38. The one thing we also found out was for every car over 20 years old, Mr. Servalino, this is going to affect you, every car over 20 years old is going to go up under taxes this year. And that's because, under the existing law, the last year's law, everything over 20 years old was capped at $500. Under the new law, you get to year 20 and it's at 15% of MSRP or $500, whichever is greater. That's what the law says. So a 1988 Honda Accord, which last year paid $16, under scheme A, will pay 65 this year and, under scheme B, will pay 86. A 1999 Lexus, which last year paid 16, under scheme A, will pay 112 this year, an increase of $96, or 149 under B, an increase of 133. A 2003 Buick Park Avenue, which was $16 last year, this year is 115 or 153, depending on which way we go. 2003 Dodge Ram, the same thing, 16 last year, 134 this year, 179 next year. And just one more. A Ford Excursion, 2003, last year was $16, this year, under A, is 169, an increase of $153, and under B, it's 225, an increase of $209. So when looking at this, we've come to the conclusion that this is an erratic result. Some people do better and some people do worse under either scheme. What we have also determined is we make some outcomes significantly worse under B than under A. And under those circumstances, we do not want to go forward with B. It doesn't get us where we need to be and it doesn't work the way we thought, which was that everybody came down just a little less. Here, some people go up some significantly. And with that, we are going to withdraw the request that you consider going to alternative B and that you simply allow alternative A to stay in place. And we'll go forward with the budget based on those numbers. And we'll be presenting that before, you know, the next couple of weeks. So with that, does anybody have any questions?
Any questions? No questions. Thank you, mayor.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Before we break into committees, reassess into committees, we got to take care of two household items. We're going to add item number 11. There's a request from Alderman Elsef. It's going to be receiving place on file. So Alderwoman Martinez-McCarthy, is there a motion?
Motion to add item number 11 to the agenda.
Alderwoman Weaver.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Alderman Elsef.
I think the fact that it's on the agenda, except for several months, I've asked for this information and have gotten nothing. So to take it and put it in the file is not really an answer. It's simply a postponement of giving me some information. And it's not just me, because quite honestly, I have constituents, everybody here does, that would like to know what's going on with all this property we bought and nothing has been done. It's obscene that nobody cares or nobody asks the questions or answers the questions. We have a responsibility. We bought this property. We are maintaining it, I hope to some extent. And nobody here can tell me how much it's costing us to keep it, what we're going to do with it, when it's going to happen. There's no answers to any of these questions. So putting this on record is one step. But at no point in time, this is an answer to the constituents and taxpayers in the city of Waterbury as to what we're doing with all this property that, in my opinion, and that's my opinion, we voted for it, but we shouldn't have bought to begin with, but now we're saddled with it. And all I'm asking is what are we doing with it and how much is this costing us to do nothing to it? And nobody can give me an answer. And I think it's, you know, sad. And I'm going to keep bringing it up. This is going to go on record that I'm asking the questions. At least it's now documented. But please don't feel that I'm placated, because I'm far from satisfied with putting this in the file. Thank you.
And I think it's been pretty clear on my end that I've asked for this information every time you've asked for it, on record, on every meeting that you've asked for it. So I can only...
You know, you've answered me every single time in that you're trying your best. I don't know what's being covered up. I don't know if it's being covered up or it's just being put off to the side because nobody cares. But we and the taxpayers of the city of Waterbury should be demanding an answer to these questions. I don't think it's political. It's diligence on our part. That's what we're supposed to be doing. There's 15 of us sitting here that are responsible for this money and nobody's asking questions or nobody's fighting for the answers. It's time we stood up and said, this is enough. Let's find out what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of adding item number 11 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Item number 11 is added to the agenda. And just item eight, there was an item made for Kerry Swain. We don't normally do this, but there's a time-sensitive document that has to be approved for the Board of Ed. They will be approving it in their March 20 meeting. It's not something we do, but they're asking us to approve it first because it's time-sensitive. So just to make note of that change of March 20, 2025, on the cover sheet, it should read that, not February 20. It's the anticipated meeting on March 20. So with that, we will reassess into committees and we will start with finance.
I call the Finance Committee to order item number six. Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a budget transfer from the Water Department's Capital Improvement Fund for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2025, in the amount of $150,000, as submitted by Sarah Argary, Manager of Budget and Oversight. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the transfer.
Is there a second? Is there discussion?
Yes, sir.
Yes. Alderman.
I have several questions on this. This was something that was put forward last year, I believe, as a capital improvement to cover materials, some sort of a cover, at a cost of $150,000 then. I'm really unhappy with the fact that an engineer who decided that we needed to put a canopy over something wasn't smart enough to know that you had to put it on a foundation. I mean, at this point in time, somebody, I mean, any one of us knows, if you're going to build something, you got to have something underneath it, some sort of a foundation. And $150,000 slab, you could put the Waterbury Mall on a slab that size if it was what you would pay commercially. This is ridiculous amount of money, an absolute ridiculous amount of money, unless this thing is as big as the mall. And I doubt we need anything that big. So if I can get some answers as to why $150,000 for a concrete slab for a $150,000 building. I personally have put up several steel canopies and Quonset Hut-type buildings and stuff. Nowhere did it ever cost that kind of money per square foot. And again, I don't have the square footage, but I know it's not big enough to justify this cost. So I'm really dead set against spending this kind of money.
Sure. Sarah Argary, Manager of Budget Development and Oversight. I'll give a quick recap and then Brad Malley, our Acting Superintendent of Water, can give some more specifics on the project. But at the time, when the $150,000 was requested in the fiscal year 24 capital budget, it's my understanding that the concrete slab wasn't anticipated to be needed internally by the department. I believe the structural engineer came in afterwards. This project has been bid several times. And then, once they had the bids come back, and well, the structural engineer came in and did say that the concrete foundation would be needed, that's when the project grew and we need the additional $150,000. So originally, when the 150 was requested for fiscal year 24, I don't believe the concrete slab was thought of at all because the engineer hadn't been a part of the project at that time. And I'll let Brad answer some more questions on the project.
Good evening, Alderman. President. Thank you for having me. My name is Brad Malley. I am the Acting Superintendent of Water. Just to clarify a couple of the questions that you brought up, it's not a continuous slab. It is a walled foundation. The building itself is 45 feet deep by 70 feet wide by over 40 feet high. It allows triaxle dump trucks to back up into it. It is the place where the Water Department stores our aggregate materials such as cold patch, gravel, and other things. And for years, we've had a earthen material shed that is in such disrepair, it does not serve its use anymore. We have gone out to bid with this several times, looked at it from every different angle, including concrete blocks, not putting it on anything. The cheapest solution is the concrete foundation, which is, if you think about a 45 by 70 building and it's seven feet off the ground plus another 40 feet of canvas, if you think about what it looks like at the Department of Public Works across the road, basically, it's the same thing. The concrete was the cheapest alternative to go to. Leaving the materials out in the rain as they are right now ends up wasting a lot more money because all of the asphalt that we buy to repair the roads and brakes and service leaks and any time that we compromise the road and have to put temporary patches down or pave, that asphalt is compromised and the oil doesn't stay in it because it's gotten wet so many times. So we're wasting money left and right just buying the aggregate alone without covering it. We were not expecting the extra $150,000 because, as Sarah mentioned, the company that we bought the actual dome structure from, their engineer came out when it was time to put it all together and map it out and said that the existing foundation that we now sit on is not structurally sound enough to support the 20,000-pound building that's going to go on top. We need to bring the concrete high enough off the ground in order for trucks to back up and dump into it without the need for a front-end loader to push those things into the earthen material shed. So at that point, you have to bring it up seven feet, or seven feet off the ground. At that point, structurally, the concrete has to be wide enough to support that building that's now in the air in the wind, 40 feet in the air. So I hope that explains it a little more.
My point is if you go to DOT, they have what's called the salt sheds, they call them, because you have to keep salt covered and off the ground. You go to state universities, they have the same thing and many commercial operations have it. Nobody spends $300,000 on a building like that. I don't understand why our costs are so much higher. And I understand that if I use the price that I'm familiar with 10 years ago, it's different than today, but not that much. I know, you know, slabs get put down for $30,000, $40,000 that are that big.
Well, sir, again, it's not a slab.
It's a slab with four-foot walls around.
It's an open, like, think of the shape of a U that's seven feet off the ground, supporting another 20,000-pound steel structure above it.
All the salt sheds are basically, if you look in this DOT and everything, they all have the same type of thing. And that's what I'm saying. This cost is exorbitant, that's all. And I can't support it because of the cost. I'm fully in support of what you're doing, but I just think there's so much more money. The $150,000, in my opinion, should have taken care of the whole thing without a profit. But now, you know, because the slab wasn't included, now we're going to get doubled. And I can't go along with that. There's no way you can justify that to me. If I'm here another 20 years, maybe I'll go along with that price.
Sir, just to alleviate that, we've gone out to bid over five times on just the structure alone. And we could never get that price under $200,000 for a structure that we're able to back up into. And you combine that with the cost of the foundation that's needed to support it, we couldn't, we went out to bid several times, several different ways, through a myriad of different companies, and we could never touch the price that we got. I don't, beyond that, I don't really have an explanation for the price.
I don't want to minimize your effort. Thank you for doing that. I just feel that I think you were looking in the wrong parking lot.
Is there anybody else? Thank you.
Is there further discussion? Yes, Alderman.
Thank you for recognizing me. I just wanted to say that you just did an amazing job explaining that. I clearly understood, because I did think about 2024 when we initially had the request for $150,000. So I was sort of like, okay, what do we miss? But I completely understand now. You're talking about 75 by 45. It's not, we're not backing up a little Jeep. And it's going to also then cover all this pledge that we have in place. So I just wanted to say that you did an amazing job explaining it, at least to me. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Is there further discussion? Seeing none?
Thank you.
Will come to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay.
Nay.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Elsef.
No.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Mosley.
Yes.
Aldo and New Jane. Alderman Rinaldi.
Yes.
Alderman Salvio.
Yes.
Five yes, one no.
The motion passes. As far as the standing committee, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve and authorize the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments of tax bills in the amount of $12,612.53, as submitted by Frank A. Caruso, Jr., CCMC Revenue Collection Manager. May I have a motion?
Motion to make refunds.
Second, please. Second on the motion. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Abstentions? Motion passes. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Nope. Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you.
I call to order the Intergovernmental Committee meeting. Starting with item one, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a Lead and Healthy Homes Professional Services contract for Waterbury Lead and Healthy Homes between the city of Waterbury and Jason DeLeo of 37 Ward Street in the amount of $70,550, as submitted by Francis Ford Program Manager, Waterbury Lead and Healthy Homes. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Alderwoman Zimmerman.
So I just have a question. So this is a grant, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. From the city?
I believe it's a federal.
From the federal to the city for this?
Good evening. Ashling McGuckin, Director of Health. This is a federal grant that we received from HUD, Housing and Urban Development.
Okay. And I remember this coming, I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
The money that's being spent comes from a grant from HUD. This is money being given to the homeowner to remove the lead. It's not a loan, though. It is a grant for the homeowner that will not be repaid. So the pool of money comes from HUD. But this contract is to give this seventy thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars to a homeowner who will then use that money to remove the lead from their their building.
So we receive the pool of money and then now we're awarding this person the seventy thousand? Thank you, Mr. President.
But it is a grant, not a loan, so it'll go to them if we never get repaid.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on item number one? Thank you. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number three. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen not disapprove of the following unrestricted appointments as submitted by Paul K. Peranuski, Jr., Mayor, City of Waterbury. Those appointments are Board of Public Health, Shelley Kemp, term to be appointed, one-one, twenty-twenty-two to twelve-thirty-one, twenty-twenty-five. Board of Ethics, O'Neil Lindo, term to be appointed, eight-one, twenty-twenty-two to seven-thirty-one, twenty-twenty-seven. Can I get a motion to not disapprove?
Motion to not disapprove.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of not disapproving say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? They are approved. Item number four. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve an agreement for North End Disposal Area Transfer Station Scale Replacement between the City of Waterbury and Fairbanks Sales, Inc. Under this contract, the cost of Fairbanks Scale, Inc. services will not exceed one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-seven dollars for the entire term of the contract as submitted by Patrick Mulvehill, Department Deputy Director of Public Works. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Rodriguez?
Patrick Mulvehill, Deputy Director of Public Works. How you doing?
Good. How are you?
Could you explain to me how long this has been, the scale has been not fixed?
The scale's been down for a couple of years now. We were working on getting a spec together to get it out to bid. And we're ready to go now once we get the contract signed. The lead time on the materials is about six weeks. We're hoping to have the project possibly done in three to four months.
Okay. And I ask this question is because from what I heard, this was, there was money allocated to fix this scale before, and we don't know where that money went. So that's why I'm asking, now we're asking a hundred and seventy-eight thousand. But where is the money that it was allocated for this scale in the past?
This is the money that was allocated in the past in the capital budget. And we're asking now for approval of the contract. There was no money approved before to fix this. This is the money that was approved, I believe it was two, two years ago, possibly.
And why took so long for us to fix this scale?
Just getting the bids back together and engineering and other projects. I do quite a few other projects and just, you know, trying to put them all together and get them done in priority. But it did take a little longer making sure we got, we had an engineering firm help us to make sure we had the spec correctly. So we have, the scale that's there has been there since nineteen seventy-four. So we wanted to make sure we get it right. And this one will last as long, if not longer.
Okay. One more question. How much money do we lose without having this scale? Because I know, you know, we're talking about budgets and all this stuff that is going on. How much money we lose as a city not collecting? Because as I know, and probably a lot of people know, we don't charge now because we don't have a scale. We don't charge the residents to dump. How much money are we losing every year?
I don't have the exact numbers on that, but right now, residents, even before residents were allowed two free dumps.
Yeah.
Then after that, we would charge them. We were taking in a lot of material from commercial haulers and they're not entitled to any. And we were charging them not enough money. So we were taking it in and they were, they were bringing it in and then we were bringing it somewhere else to get rid of it. By the time you factor all our labor into it, I don't, we don't, we weren't charging enough. We, it's in there now. We're going to up that charge for the commercial haulers, a hundred and seventy dollars a ton. One seventy-five a ton, it'll be just for the commercial haulers. And it'll stay the same for the residents. It's one fifteen a ton for residents after the two free dumps. I don't have the exact number of what we lost, but I don't believe we lost that much if you take into effect that we're not taking any commercial haulers and we weren't making any money on the commercial haulers. And we, we will pick up any material at a resident's house, too. So whether they, they can put it out in front of their house, we're going to pick it up for free. So if they bring it up there and we charge them, they can just leave it in front of their house. You know what I'm saying? We're going to get it for free there. So I don't, I don't believe we lost that much money by doing what we're doing. The main thing is to get the material not thrown on the side of the road, you know, and keep it off the roads and get rid of it.
Yeah, no, I get that. And I thank you for that. And I know you guys do a great job. But, you know, my concerns were that, you know, we had this money, you know, it took so long to fix it. And, you know, the, the money that we've been losing for, you know, not having commercial vehicles coming into the city and dump and, you know, appreciate it. So this money was already allocated. We just approving it from the two years past. I just wanted to make it clear because I know people will say, well, wait a minute, we had this money before. Why are we not, we didn't use it at that time? So I just wanted to make it clear that we're, we're getting this done.
Yes, we are.
Thank you so much for your help.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on item number four? Alderwoman Zimmerman?
I just feel like as we go up to, as we come up to budget season, we've learned last year, talking to some of the department heads, that some of these departments where we are getting a profit or we are getting fee, we're charging fees and we're making a profit, like, we need to have special attention on you guys and make sure that you get the support that you need. So the fact that this was done for a large number of years, isn't necessarily you and your department's fault. Like, you had a lot, you didn't have the bandwidth to do it and maybe moving forward.
I'll take responsibility for it. I have a lot of other projects. I've been working in between getting other stuff done. I do all the police cars and honestly, that's my top priority is police. To make sure they have enough cars and we're in the process of adding twenty cars now. We got behind on vehicles from during COVID. We couldn't get vehicles. We're actually doing two rounds now. Now, this is all money that was approved before. So it's kind of a juggling to try to keep everything going. And I'm not going to make excuses, but, you know, I'll take responsibility for it being a little late.
Yeah, it's good to know and it's good for us to know. So that way, we can figure out where you need support and where we, you know, we have the time and to figure out the expenses. So thank you for explaining all that.
Any further discussion on item number four? Thank you. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number seven. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve an application by the Waterbury Department of Public Health to the Substance Abuse and Mental Services Administration for the grant titled Strategic Prevention Framework Partnerships for Success for Communities and Tribes. This grant is for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year for five years totaling one point two-five million dollars. There are no matching funds required by the city as submitted by Ashling McGuckin, RN MSNMPH, Director of Public Health. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Alderwoman Zimmerman?
Thanks for recognizing me.
Good evening. Ashling McGuckin, Director of Health.
Hi, just a question on from what's happening from federal down to a state level. Do we feel that we're going to have these funds for the next few years? Do you see any cuts that are happening, coming down from mental health services? Is there any kind of red flags that you're seeing moving forward in the future past this year? Yeah.
I can't tell the future and I wouldn't purport to know what's going on. But at the moment, we haven't been told that this funding opportunity has been rescinded. So we're intending to apply in good faith.
And then who goes out to, it's, you know, that you do outreaches into different target markets? Who, who does that?
We would be partnering with other organizations in town. But we, the intent, it's not really so much outreach with this grant. It's really convening those organizations that are already working with young people and focusing on developing a really clear unified plan for how we're going to approach youth substance abuse prevention in the city. So these organizations that we've got letters of support in our application for are folks who are already working with young people. Some of them are doing substance use prevention work. Some are just doing positive youth development. But we're hoping that by bringing everyone together and getting a sense of what their experience has been like, we can learn from the successes and address some of the challenges that they face as community-based organizations that a lot of times are just run by one individual or a small group of individuals and kind of harness the collective wealth of their experience and knowledge so that we can help share resources across those organizations.
And who are the organizations we work with right now for this?
Some of them are listed in the application. We have letters of support from the Hispanic Coalition, the Bridge to Success, Waterbury Youth Services, the YMCA. Those are just some of them that are, are there. But the letters of commitment that are included with the application are the folks that we have commitments from.
Okay, thank you.
So those community partners, just because I'm sure you don't, obviously, have them all memorized. There's about, there's ten of them. Boys and Girls Club, City Youth Theater, Hang Time, Hispanic Coalition, Madre Latina, St. Mary's Hospital, the Leadership University, Young Group Society, Waterbury Services, and the YMCA.
We've approached several others. We just haven't gotten letters from them. So we didn't want to misrepresent their level of commitment in the application.
Super. Any further discussion on item number seven?
I just have a quick follow-up question. So are we, we're paying those organizations, too?
No, we're, we're providing a stipend if they have a young person who wants to participate on the coalition so that we're paying young people for their time. But those organizations are just collaborating with us. The funds are going towards a part-time data analyst, a part-time program coordinator. And then the rest of the funds are going towards a data management system and some other costs that are listed in the budget.
And those two positions will report into your department. Is that correct?
Yeah, those are positions that are actually existing positions. So we'll be offsetting part of their, their existing salary.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on item number seven? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion passes. Item number eight. So as mentioned, this is from the Board of Ed and they will hopefully take this up in their March meeting, March twentieth. The, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve an agreement with Cooperative Education Services for a three-year period and in the not-to-exceed amount of seven hundred and sixty-four thousand, five hundred and ten dollars to provide educational services in accordance with students' individual education program as submitted by Carrie A. Swain, Clerk, Waterbury Board of Education. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion on item number eight? Alderman Rodriguez?
Good evening. Wendy John, Director of People's Services.
How you doing? So this is the seven hundred and sixty-four thousand, it will be for the three-year program. How many children that we have are, will be in this program in the, in Waterbury?
So it's for four students as per their individual education plan. And it's for a three-year term.
Four students? Will be using this program for three years?
Correct.
Hold on. Give me one second.
And just so that we have some scope, this was originally approved by the Board of Aldermen on June twenty-fourth of twenty twenty-four. But we had to go back and forth a little bit with the state-approved private facility with some contract negotiations. So we had to bring it back to the Board of Aldermen and Board of Education.
So we're talking that each student will, you know, roughly sixty-three thousand dollars for each student for every year?
Correct.
Okay. To me, it's a kind of steep price, but, you know, education doesn't have a price, like we say. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any further discussion on item number eight? Short. Mr. Mayor?
I think you make a very good point, Alderman Rodriguez. And I think this is something that we've been talking about. We have a large number of special ed students in the Waterbury school system. All of the large municipalities do. And the costs continue to grow year over year. And we're required by law to provide services. That's what this plan does. This is the services that this is identifying. So, yeah, it's a lot of money, but that's what we face as we try to get through this, this whole process. Things are not as easy to get through as they used to be in the old days. I just want you to all be well aware of that. And we are facing, I know Alderman Zimmerman asked a question, and I don't have a crystal ball about what's going to happen. But in light of all of that, we are also facing serious cuts from federal dollars in a lot of these programs that, you know, right now, I'm not sure where they're going to go. But even today, we found out about another account that's been frozen out of the federal government that we can no longer access. So things are going to get worse before they get better in these, in these realms. I just want you to all be aware of that.
And thank you, Mr. Mayor. And one more thing?
Sure.
Is that we're talking about special ed and the governor already vetoed forty-three million dollars. How that's going to affect?
The compromise was to put the forty-three back in. He just vetoed where it was coming from. And he's put it back into the, through the interest on the ARPA dollars. But yes, there's, there's a bigger need than there is money available even under that scheme.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And I'm going to jump in here and comment. We just picked up another eight, nine hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars, so, for this year, for special ed, so.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Any further discussion on item number eight? Alderwoman Zimmerman?
So this is for four students?
Yes.
And then can you help me understand the, the scope of services? Because it sounds like they go to another facility for some care and then come back. Is that right?
So this is where they actually receive their education in lieu of going to a City of Waterbury school.
So where do they go?
As per their planning and placement team decision. So they go to a school in Trumbull, which is what we're seeking to get approved. It's a state-approved private special education school. And there's numerous ones that are approved by Connecticut State Department of Education. And Cooperative Education Services is one of them. It's actually a public entity that's approved by Connecticut State Department of Education to provide special education services in lieu of a student attending City of Waterbury schools.
Do we have more children who are sent out of Waterbury for different I, I, sorry, IEPs?
So another word would be an outplacement. We have several students that attend outplacements. But the proper name would be a state-approved private special education school. And this is one.
Do you know what that number looks like? Is it in the hundreds or of the children that are sent out of Waterbury for different IEPs?
It's less than a hundred for us as a city that are placing out. But we are a very transient school district. And we often have students that move in or they're in DCF care that we have to provide tuition to. And those are using city funds to be able to provide that. And that comes out of the same pot of money as our outplacement students.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on item number eight? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number nine. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a Waterbury Health Department contract for two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars with Yale University to conduct work as a subcontractor under their grant from the Connecticut Department of Public Health for comprehensive integrated human immunodeficiency virus slash hepatitis C virus prevention services as submitted by Ashling McGuckin, RN MSNMPH, Director of Public Health. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion on item number nine? Hearing none? Alderwoman Zimmerman?
Thanks. I know. Thanks. I know we discussed this, Mr. Chairman, but if I can just ask a question.
Good evening. Ashling McGuckin, Director of Health.
Thanks. How many years have we done this?
The prevention grant?
Right.
Um, that's a really good question. I don't want to misstate, but we just finished a four-year grant with this same funding source, but I'm not certain whether prior to that, it was exactly the same funding source.
And it was with Yale?
No.
Yale was our subcontractor or?
No, we directly were contracted with DPH in the previous iteration in the current grant that we've had. This is a new endeavor to, I'm misspeaking. Prior to our current grant, we were directly contracted with DPH. We've been with Yale for the past year. This is a, this is year, we're going into year two of a five-year grant.
And are we seeing progress with helping these different communities, or have the communities overgrown and we don't have nothing? Do we have solid numbers as any to show progress?
Yes.
Okay.
I can provide the, the latest report to you all, just for your education, and, but it's, I think where we're seeing the greatest progress is in the intersection of substance use disorder and HIV infection. So we're seeing that the numbers for HIV infection are coming down and the numbers of overdoses are coming down, kind of in similar ways, because it's similar populations that are impacted in many ways.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on item number nine? Alderman Rodriguez.
Where are the other centers that are going to be located at? What part of the city that this is going to be taking place?
This is an existing initiative that is run out of the Health Department, so it's not a center so much as funding for a team lead, two outreach workers, and then a portion of the section chief's salary.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Any further discussion on item number nine? Great. Thank you. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. As the mayor said earlier in his comments, item 10 has been withdrawn. Moving on to unfinished business number one. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve a resolution regarding joining the Connecticut Municipal Redevelopment Authority as a member municipality, as submitted by Paul K. Perrineuski Jr., Mayor, City of Waterbury. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion on unfinished business item number one? Alderman Rodriguez.
I want to thank the mayor for taking the initiative to do this program. I heard good news about it. I've been hearing good things about this program, so I want to thank you for that.
Thank you. Yes, it, this is just, adds one more tool to a developer's potential toolbox that can make it more attractive to commit into some of the projects that we have that are going to be coming online, particularly Freight Street, when we go out to bid for that. So, yep, I would recommend everyone support this project.
Any further discussion on item number, unfinished business item number one? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the Intergovernmental Committee.
Motion to adjourn.
And a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.
Okay. With that, we will return to the regular order of business. Follow-on items are on the consent calendar. Item number one is on consent to approve. Item number two is a receivable place on file. Item number three is on consent to not disapprove. Item four is on consent to approve. Item number five is a receivable place on file. Item number eight is on consent to approve. Item number nine is on consent to approve. Item number 11 is a receivable place on file, and unfinished business item number one is on consent to approve. Is there a motion with respect to the consent calendar as read?
Second.
Yep.
Yeah. Six.
I did six. I, I skipped six and seven because we're withdrawing them. I withdrew six. I skipped right over six and seven. I pulled them myself because I figured you guys are going to pull them from the consent calendar, right? Little, little ahead of you, sorry. So, motion with respect to the calendar as read. Motion has been made, seconded by Alderman Weaver. Any discussion, any further additions or deletions between, besides item number six and seven? Hearing none. All those in favor of reading, of approving the consent calendar as read, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Guys have it. The motion carries, and the consent calendar is approved. With respect to item number six, the chair would recognize Alderman Salvio, the Chair of the Finance Committee. Alderman Salvio.
Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve a budget transfer from the Water Department's Capital Improvement Fund for the fiscal year June 30th, 2025, in the amount of $150,000, as submitted by Sarah R. Gary, Manager of Above Budget Development and Oversight.
Second.
First. First motion, yep.
Motion, motion to approve.
Motion made by Alderman Mosley, seconded by Alderman Rinaldi. All those in favor of, uh, discussion, excuse me, discussion. Alderman Alsop.
It just took a few minutes to look up the price of concrete, concrete work, and for this particular project, it would be about $57,180. And that's the high end of what...
I don't think that's what you're on, but...
Samir?
What, what, what's your vote right now? What are you voting?
Item number six is the budget transfer.
Okay.
Yeah, the budget transfer for the capital improvements to the, uh, to the, yeah. You want to say something, Samir?
No, go ahead.
Nope.
No, I'm, I'm saying, I, I looked it up and figured by the square footage and everything that I was told and the size and everything else.
So here's, go ahead.
$57,180. If I'm off by 20%, I'm not 150,000.
And what's that for?
Concrete, reinforced concrete, which is what is used for this...
Reinforced concrete to build what?
Walls and a, and a slab.
Okay.
Exactly what we need. I, I've been involved in several of these projects.
Well, you, you've heard what he said. I mean, we didn't make the number up, right? We got here by...
I do, I do agree with it.
Going out to bid.
I agree you did due diligence for whatever.
What would you have us do in a city with a procurement ordinance in which the bid comes out at a certain number and you think it should be done for less? What would you have us do at this point, Jack? What's your solution to this problem that you've identified?
I think we're bidding and getting the wrong bids or something. I don't know what...
What should we do to get the right bid?
I'm not the purchasing agent. I'm telling you, if I was, this is what you'd be paying.
You're, you're an expert on engineering and can tell me what it should cost to build a concrete structure, but when I tell you that...
I would make five or six more phone calls and say, "Look, I can get it done according to three sites I just looked up for under 60,000."
I mean, I don't, I don't know what you've looked up on your sites and that you have all the specs, but all I'm, all I'm suggesting to you is we're constrained. I could go out and probably buy lots of things cheaper than I get when I bid for them. There's no question that's the case. And I could tell you that on any individual project, I can go out and negotiate with the developer to get a cheaper price than public bids will get. Public bids exist because the law assumes that every public official is a crook, and therefore, we have to protect the city against crooks. So we have a, a system that you can't manipulate, which is what we have here in Waterbury. But I guess my question is, if we go out to bid five times and come out with a $200,000 number, or a $250,000 number, or $150,000 number, what would you have us do to construct it at a number that's lower than that?
I don't know why we're getting such large numbers. I'm not going to accept it. That's my answer.
Okay.
You know, you, you could tell me you want to charge me $10 for a car. I'd probably look at that car real hard. You tell me you're going to charge me $100,000, I wouldn't even look at it.
I've not, I've talked about...
I want to know why we have to pay close to three times the price.
Because we have to bid. Because we can't go to a manual and look it up and say, "This is what we think it should cost, and we're going to buy it for this." We have to bid. We have a whole process of bidding that's in place. I know, I get what you're telling me.
I had to, I had to work within the straight constraints of the state. I worked for the state. And when I went out to bid, I knew ahead of time what my range would be, and I knew whatever I thought I was going to pay, I had to add 10 or 15% because there was the, you're the state, you're going to pay more.
But whatever that, whatever...
See something to this?
Whatever the number the state came out with is what you paid, right?
I kept calling until I got closer. I mean, I never would accept three times or two and a half times. Never. I'd cancel the project before I did that.
Well, we...
And eventually, you get the project, because when you stop hanging up on these guys and then you call them six months later and you say, "Look, your pencil's not sharp enough," they get a sharper pencil. But when you just say, "Go ahead and charge me..."
We bid it. It's not, "Go ahead and charge me." We bid it. You can only go out and bid so many times. It, it's a nice concept, but you still haven't suggested what we do other than not do anything and just let the project languish, which is an alternative.
I just, I'm just trying to say, I can't go along with paying two and a half times. I can't do it.
But you're making it sound like there's incompetence going on when there's a public...
And I said, "I appreciate your diligence." I said that. And I know what it's like. But I also know that hang up the phone, try again. That's, that's all I would say, because this is just way too much, in my opinion. Way too much.
Further discussion. Alderman Mosley.
Yeah, yes, thank you. So thank you for recognition, Mr. President.
Oh, excuse me, sorry, sorry. These aren't phone calls. These are bids. At that, at that number under the, under the statute that, or the ordinance that's in, in place, you have to go out for a bid. You put out the specs and you get numbers. Bids are not negotiable. The number comes in at what it is. You can't keep, these, these are not phone calls, just so you understand.
I, I understand, and I'm using phone call, but at the same token, if you say, "Well, you came in way over what we budgeted, sorry. Goodbye." They're looking for work. They're going to call you back with a different number. They're going to, you open up a new bid, you open up a new bid, and you will get different numbers. Okay. Yeah, please.
Alderman Mosley.
I don't know why the rest of the world does it different. It blows my mind.
Okay. Alderman Mosley, it's time.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I, I hear my colleagues concerned. I guess the things I, I want to raise and the points I want to make, I'm not as much of an expert as others are in terms of this work, but I know that the work needs to be done, right? And it needs to be done right. I also acknowledge and respect our city's procurement process, and I think as responsible legislators and Alderman, we need to make sure we are upholding that as well. I think this is a, a fair ask. I also think that, you know, we have to keep in mind, this is a, a transfer of funds, and we've asked our city's budget director to come to us anytime there's a transfer of funds, so I think we have to acknowledge that as well. So again, I, I mean, I think the city has, has done us due diligence in coming to this number. I think that we have an obligation to acknowledge the procurement process and proceed with this project. My fear is the cost that it would be for us not to move forward with this, and I think we have to weigh that against the cost that's presented to us at this time. So I will be voting in favor of this, and I encourage my colleagues to do so as well.
Further discussion. Alderman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have one question. The, the square footage of this project, how much was a, a starting bid for, for the square footage of this project? Anybody knows? 25, 50? The square, so, square foot?
Yeah. It took the water, I, I don't have the, the granular details that far down.
Okay. No problem. Yeah, so now I see that, so we started with 150,000, and now we're asking for another 150,000?
You have to understand the concept, right? So the first 150,000 was to put the canopy over it.
Okay.
And the first engineer, you know, when they first looked at it, thought they could put the canopy over the existing flooring. It turns out that when the canopy came in, it can't go over the existing flooring, and they therefore have to build this. So the one, the money for the canopy is there. That pays for the canopy. This is now to pay for the flooring and the walls and the structure to hold the canopy up. That's 150,000. That's what this is for. It's not an addition because that was never part of it in the first place. They went out and they got the cost now to do this flooring.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
No problem. Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Alderman Alsop. Alderwoman Cavallo.
Yes.
I'm sorry? Alderman Hunter.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Mosley.
Yes.
Alderwoman Martinez McCarthy.
Yes.
Alderman Nujang.
Yes.
Alderman Rinaldi.
Yes.
Alderman Rodriguez.
Sure.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Okay. Say something. Alderman Salvio.
Yes.
Alderman Taladine.
Yes.
Alderwoman Weaver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Zimmerman. Alderman D. G. Ovencaro.
Yes.
13 yes, one no.
Eyes have it. The motion carries, and item six is approved with respect to item number seven, which was pulled, to let everybody know that Alderman Lopez is recusing himself from the vote. So let the record show that Alderman Lopez recused himself from the vote with respect to item number seven. The chair would recognize Alderman Tajladi, the Chair of the Finance, excuse me, Intergovernmental Committee.
Item number seven. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve an application by the Waterbury Department of Public Health to the Substance Abuse and Mental Services Administration for the grant titled Strategic Prevention Framework Partnerships for Success for Communities and Tribes. This grant is for $250,000 per year for five years totaling $1.25 million. There are no matching funds required by the city, as submitted by Ashling McGuckin, RN, MSN, and PH, Director of Public Health. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Woman, uh, woman. Motion made by Alderwoman Weaver, seconded by Alderwoman Martinez McCarthy. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Let's do a roll call.
Alderman Alsop.
Yes.
Alderman Cavallo.
Yes.
Alderman Hunter.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.[1634.15] Alderman Lopez. Oh, I'm sorry. He excused himself. Alderman Mosley.
Yes.
Alderwoman Martinez McCarthy.
Yes.
Alderman Nujang. Alderman Rinaldi.
Yes.
Alderman Rodriguez.
Yes.
Alderman Salvio.
Yes.
Alderman Taladine.
Yes.
Alderwoman Weaver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Zimmerman.
Yes.
Alderman DiGiovincarlo.
Yes.
Got 13 approved.
Okay. The eyes have it. The motion carries, and item number seven is approved with respect to Standing Committee. The chair would recognize Michael Salvio, the Chair of the Finance Committee.
Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve and authorize the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments of tax bills in the amount of $12,612.53, as submitted by Frank A. Caruso Jr., CCMC Revenue Collection Manager.
Motion to make refunds is read.
Motion made by Alderman Mosley, seconded by Alderman Rinaldi. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor approving the refunds? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Guys have it. The motion carries, and the refunds are approved. That is our business for the evening. I'll start off the Good Order of Business with some very exciting news that Monday, March 31st at 6:00 PM, will be the budget presentation. So March 31st, 6:00 PM, would be the budget presentation, so try to keep that date open if you can. If you have plans, understood, but it will be the, only the presentation, no questions asked, all right? So with that, anything else for the Good Order? Alderman Mosley?
Yes, thank you for recognition, Mr. President. I just wanted to take a moment to thank our city's emergency response services. We've had a very tough winter, and especially the last two to three weeks, and I want to thank each and every department, the department head, and the mayor's office for responding to calls from residents and quality of life issues in our communities, and I just want to say thank you. Thank you.
Anything further? Alderman Elsa?
Reminder that next Monday, there will be a mayor for the day here for St. Patrick's Day, and I welcome everybody to come and enjoy the ceremonies and even afterwards, the bigger party.
You have a, you have a price figured out for that yet?
Of what?
You have a price figured out for that yet?
Whatever you can afford to spend.
Alderman Rodriguez?
I just want to say that for those that couldn't go to the robotics competition, it was a great event. A lot of young kids doing their job, and, you know, we see the future there, and it was an amazing, I was with the mayor at Willby, and it was a great event. We should keep doing it every single year because there's a lot of talent in our kids, especially in our kids in Waterbury. So thank you for the invitation to go there. It was amazing.
Anything further? Hearing none. Alderwoman Martinez McCarthy. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
We are adjourned.